All right. Good evening, everyone. Time is 6:35 on March 16th. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call. All council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic that holds its own in its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council member Jackson, will you lead some prayer prayers?
I have the Father, we come for you once more again. We come thanking you for this wonderful day. Father God, we ask you to come into the midst of our meeting. As any meeting that we have, we would like for you to be in the middle of it. Father God, we ask a special blessing for our basketball team. Help these young men to continue to be who they are and help them to continue to understand who's first and who should be first in their life. In your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tyson. Okay, I have a few announcements. Planning Commission meeting, March 22nd. I believe I saw today that that meeting has been canceled. Our council work session is April 7th, 6:30 PM in the community room. Main Street Commission meeting, April 12th, 8 AM, also in the community room. Historic preservation meeting, April 12th, 6 PM in the community room. Downtown Development Authority, April 14th, 9 AM in the Welcome Center. Social Circle Development Authority, April 14th, 10:30 AM, City Hall Conference Room. And our next council meeting, April 19th, 6:30 PM in our community room. We'll begin this afternoon with, or this evening, rather, with presentations. And the first one that I have on the agenda is a resolution recognizing the Social Circle Redskins Varsity Basketball Team. And if I may, before I begin that, I'd like to take a moment, a personal privilege, just to say a few words to our team and to the coaches. First of all, congratulations to the school system, from the superintendent, the coaches, the staff, everyone that's involved in that, and certainly the basketball team. Congratulations. Thank you for what you've accomplished this year. I'd like to take just a second and read something. I didn't tell Coach Jackson I was going to do this. I hope I don't embarrass him. But he wrote a letter, and it was to the Redskins. First paragraph says, "I love you. I will always love you." He goes on to talk about the GHSA and some of the problems that we had as we carried through there. And then he thanked the fans, then the players, and then the five seniors that are currently will graduate this year and move on. I want to read to you what he said to the fans. Says, "Thank you. We love you so much. You've been there for every mile, for every step. You are the rowdiest, toughest, craziest group, and we wouldn't have it any other way. Their record books may say something different, but ours will always say that the 2021-2022 Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team was the best team in Georgia, the state champions." He signs it, "Social Circle then, Social Circle now, Social Circle always." Coach Jackson. Thank you, Coach, for those words. You know, he pleaded your case. I pleaded your case. This entire council pleaded your case. We think that you were treated unfairly. But you know what I'm proud of you for? The best thing you could possibly do? You took the high road. You could have been violent. You could have, as my daddy used to say, pitched to fit. You could have done a lot of things that you didn't do. But you took it and you learned a life's lesson, that life is not always fair. But I'm proud of you for what you did. And we're honored tonight to have you here and to read this resolution. I'll ask the council, after I read the resolution, if they have any comments. First of all, I'd like to call Coach Jackson and the staff and the team players up. Coach, if you'll come up and introduce your team to us.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for having us this evening. I do want to just reiterate that what I am most proud of is not how these boys play basketball, but how they live their lives, truly champions off the court. My two assistant coaches here today, Coach Kemp and Coach, Timothy Kemp and Kevin Barnes. So you guys can...
Yeah, if you will, just come on up as you call your name.
All right. And number 33, A.J. Vincent. Number 25, Jalen Robinson. Number 21, Quindarius Jackson. Number 15, Trey Douglas. Number 12, Parker Dial. Number 10, Cam Gaither. Number 5, Lemarius Jackson. Number 4 is not here, but that's Amarian Russell. Number 3, Philip Baines, Jr. Number 2, DeShawn Hyman. Number 1, Tyrell Branch. And number 0, K.J. Reed.
Gentlemen, we'll proceed with the formality. If you don't mind, I'll sit so I can get to the microphone and do this the best I can. This is the State of Georgia, City of Social Circle, Resolution 2022-4. It's a resolution to commemorate and honor the 2021-2022 Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team on an outstanding season and outstanding accomplishments. Whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Club Basketball Team had an undefeated regular season, going 26 and 0. Whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team averaged over 80 points per game throughout the season. And whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team won the Region 8A Region Championship the first in 40 years. And whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team reached the Final Four of the state championship tournament for the first time since 1974. And whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team recorded an outstanding, astounding 30 total wins in their season. And whereas the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team did the community of Social Circle a great service by bringing excitement and joy to the community, showing great dignity and integrity throughout their season. And whereas the mayor and council wish to commemorate and honor by this resolution the Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team. Be it resolved that the mayor and council of the City of Social Circle do hereby honor the 2021-2022 Social Circle Boys Varsity Basketball Team by declaring March 16th, 2022, a city day of recognition for all their accomplishments and achievements over the course of their outstanding season, and specifically recognize the following players and coaches. And forgive me if I mess up some of these names, but I'll try. First, our seniors. There are five seniors this year that will be graduating, moving on to their careers and life, so to speak. Tyrell Branch, Jamichael Trey Douglas, Camarius Gaither, Kelsey, K.J. Reed, Amarian Russell, Philip Baines, Jr., Parker Dial, DeShawn Hyman, Lemarius Jackson, Quindarius Jackson. And I just learned today, you guys are twins. Jalen Robinson, Darrell A.J. Vincent. We have Taylor Jackson, the head coach, Timothy Kemp, assistant coach, Kevin Barnes, assistant coach, Ken Jackson, the scorebook, Sierra Scarborough, team manager, Sierra Nix, trainer. So resolved this 16th day of March, 2022, signed by myself and the four council members. Each of you today, we have a signed copy of this resolution, original for you. Of course, I will present this to the school, to the coach, for his acceptance. And before doing so, I'll go around and ask the city council members if they have any comments, starting with Mr. Jackson.
I would just like to say to you, young man, that it was very exciting to watch you play basketball, to be in the gyms, to see the love that y'all have for the game, and the love that y'all have for each other. Make that your brotherhood. Make a note, no matter how far on in your go on in life, if you group of guys always stay in contact with each other. Make that special as it look, because to see the energy you guys had around each other, one day in life, one of y'all might need a phone call just to hear something from one another. So just make that a pact. You know, basketball is great, but as we go on farther in life, we have to think of other things. And some of you might go off to be coaches, some may not, never play another game of basketball again. But always keep that pact together as your brotherhood. I mean, you guys sold out gyms in Social Circle, like three or four occasions. I mean, growing up here in Social Circle, that very rarely happened. So it's special to watch you guys. And we thank you, because you brought the city together as well. So thank you, guys.
As you all already, I have already told some of you, you are our superstars. I mean, you took us to a level that we have not been in 40 years. That alone is just amazing. And for myself, I wasn't coming to the games at first, but my children was like, "We're going to the game." And they was telling me how exciting it was, so I said, "I'm going too." And the first game I saw y'all play, I was hooked. And I'm gonna tell you, it's bigger than basketball. You all brought this town together. I mean, people were traveling to Valdosta, Calhoun, everybody was right with you all. You all really brought unity to this community. So what you're doing is just amazing. And I know they said, "It's the end." When we so-called lost, everybody's saying, "It's the end." It's not the end, it's just the beginning. Because I'm gonna tell you, you were done wrong, but God will make it up to you. He's gonna make it up to you. And this is just the beginning. So keep looking forward and keep pushing. Go Redskins!
I would just echo the council and the mayor's comments so far, and just say that we're incredibly proud of you guys and all the hard work that you put in for the season and made an incredible season, putting Social Circle on the map in a way that we haven't been before. And so we appreciate you and we thank you guys for that. And I would just ask, as some of you guys go to be probably huge stars in the future, don't forget about Social Circle. All right? Love your hometown.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you guys don't mind, we'd like to take a few quick pictures with you.
Yeah, why don't you do that, Tyson? Tell us. So, excuse me. Now I have your attention. So we took a basketball up. The basketball is signed by all the ballplayers, and the idea is that we're gonna put this basketball in the Welcome Center, and it'd be a part of the history of Social Circle. We'll do a write-up on it, so they can tell their kids about this, and it's gonna always be in the Welcome Center.
There ain't no flat surface, is there?
Yeah, sit down.
Should have given the coach this brown box. Okay. For those that remain, thank you. Thank you for being here this afternoon. That was a great thing, to recognize our team. You know, we love those guys. They've really, they really put us out there this year. Next item on our agenda under presentations is employee introduction and recognition. If we have someone?
Yep.
I would like to introduce to you Lisa Mitchell. Lisa lives in Covington, and she has three children, two boys and a girl, and seven grandsons. And she's expecting identical twins in July, early August, hoping they are girls. And she's on the street department, and you may see her bebopping around town, taking care of business, because she loves working outdoors. And she's very nervous.
Yes, she will. You like to say anything, Lisa?
Well, I'm happy to be here and glad to be part of y'all's team.
We're glad to have you, Lisa. You don't mind if I tell a story on you, do you? Because you don't know what it's gonna be. I saw this young lady out in front of Pinnacle Bank in Social Circle, just pulling weeds and going around and blowing dust. I said, "Wow, she is really cleaning up the city." And I met her at the time. Penny and I were over at the grilling station having lunch. I said, "I'm gonna walk over there and introduce myself to her." So I go over there, and Lisa's standing there, and I could tell she was nervous. You know, I introduced myself as the mayor, and she finally said something to these words. "Mayor, should I be here talking to you? I really have work to do." Something like that. And I said, "Yes, ma'am. You can take a few minutes to talk to me." So Lisa, thank you. I've already observed your work, and I wish we had a lot more talent like yourself. So thank you for being here. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. We're real proud of you.
Thank y'all.
Okay, do we have any other introductions? Okay, thank you. Downtown rundown.
Good evening. First on my rundown for March 2022 is the St. Patrick's Day Beer Crawl. This is our inaugural beer crawl. It'll take place tomorrow night in downtown Social Circle from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Each participating restaurant will be offering a drink special for this event. Participants can start at Sacred Grounds, then make their way to Willie's, then to Villa Pizza, and finish at Tim Plate. For people participating in the beer crawl, if they try the signature drink at each restaurant and get their passport stamped from all four restaurants, at the end of the night at Tim Plate, they'll collect us a prize. While we encourage everyone to have a good time, we are asking that participants please drink responsibly and be considerate of others. The retail stores will be open downtown, and we encourage everyone to grab dinner and do some shopping while in downtown for this event. Next on my rundown is the pinwheel ceremony. A child's voice advocacy group will be holding a pinwheel ceremony in Friendship Park on March 31st at 4:00 PM. During the ceremony, they will be using a dedicated area in the park. Typically, they put the pinwheels and the planters in downtown each year, but this year had asked for a dedicated space in the park, so they'll be doing this because April is Child Abuse Awareness Month. So the pinwheel garden will have a banner, and that'll just bring awareness for that for the month of April. And then last on the list is Family Karaoke Night at Friendship Park. The Social Circle Main Street Commission will be hosting that event on Friday, April 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll have, we have a man from Loganville that's coming, and that's what he specializes in, is family-friendly karaoke and family-friendly games. And so we'll be giving away hot dogs, we'll have games and face painting. So we just encourage everybody to come out and join us for Family Fun Night in Friendship Park. And that's it.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have citizens' requests. I don't know of any, no one signed up for that. Do we have any council requests? Hearing none. Next item is the agenda approval. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, public hearings. We have no public hearings scheduled for this afternoon. Next item would be our financial statements. Jennifer.
Good evening. So I'll go as quickly as I can. For general fund, revenues are at 83%. They were at the same spot this time last year. For our expenses, they are at 63% overall, 54% capital, 64% operating. This time last year, we were at 63% overall. For water, we're at 44% revenue. None of that has been GFA funds received. Overall, operating is at 54% revenue. This time last year, we were at the same spot. For our expenses, we're at 39% overall. 35% of that is capital, and 44% of that is operating. This time last year, we were at 72% overall. For gas, we're at 77% revenue. This time last year, we were at 57%. And expenses are at 79% overall, 88% capital, and 78% operating. This time last year, we were at 65%. And for solid waste, 71% revenue. This time last year, 67. Our expenses are at 52%, and this time last year, 56. Any questions?
No, let's quit.
I tried, I tried. I promised.
Any questions for Jennifer? Not at all. Entertain a motion. So move. Second. Take your pick on that one, Susan. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, our consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you will do as usual and lead us through that.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Currently, we have nine items on the consent agenda. However, I'm going to ask that item number six, the consideration of acceptance of streets for a faceboard dub landing and release of Bond B, removed from this agenda. We have received a report from Jimmy Parker from Precision Planning, who went over and looked at dub landing last week, and it's still not ready to be released at this point. So I understand the gentlemen are here tonight. I apologize that I didn't get the word, but we will work with you to get this rectified very quickly. Okay? So with that said, we now have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Item one is the minutes of the mayor and council retreat for February 12th, 2022. Item two is the minutes of the mayor and council meeting for February 15th, 2022. Item three is the minutes of executive session for February 15th, 2022. Item four is the minutes of the mayor and council work session for March 3rd, 2022. Item five is the minutes of executive session for March 3rd, 2022. Item six is being removed from this meeting. Item seven is consideration of non-discrimination agreement for the G.TAP grant. And what this is, this is something that we have to adopt every three years with the Georgia Department of Transportation in order to keep receiving grant money for the transportation grants programs that they have. So this is something that's required. And also establishes Robbie Groves as the person responsible for compliance for non-discrimination for the G.TAP grant. Item eight is the consideration of a budget amendment fixed for $16,000 for driveway aprons on South Cherokee Road. We had some work done to improve some drainage problems, and this will amend the budget to allow us to pay that invoice. And item nine is the correction of a zoning map inconsistency for parcel ID SC120029.31 acres. And we have one map that was done in colored pencil. Says the use is general commercial. The official map that was adopted back in 2017 says that it is office and institutional. It should be general commercial, and so this will fix that situation and make that area consistent with the parcels around it. So with that said, that is the consent agenda for this evening, and we do recommend approval.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda with the removal of item number six.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion from Tracy.
I'll second.
Second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Old business, first item on there. If we are ready for an appointment, we have a vacancy in the planning commission, so I'll entertain a motion for an appointment on that if we are ready.
Yes. I would like to appoint Glenda Brown to the planning commission.
We have motion from Tracy, a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is Main Street appointment. During the Main Street meeting, we were notified by a recent appointment that she would not be able to continue. She would not be able to attend the meetings, not realizing they happen at 8 o'clock every second Tuesday, 8 AM. So this afternoon, I've not gotten an official resignation from her, but she will not be able to attend the meetings. So I'll ask for a motion, if we have one this afternoon, for an appointment to Main Street.
I would like to appoint Donna Jean Lightfoot to the Main Street.
Okay, we have a motion from Tracy.
Second.
Second from Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes for Ms. Donna Jean. Next up, we have new business, consideration of mayor and council's strategic goals for 2022 through 24. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Mayor, the city council adopts annual strategic goals for the city to focus on for a period that covers two years, and they do so every other year. And this particular goal document becomes part of our budget process and helps drive a lot of decision-making as we develop the budget and talk about priorities for the city. Back at our retreat that was held back in February, we had a very good discussion about what the strategic goals should be for 2022, 2024. And for the most part, these goals will stay very similar to what they were from 2020 to 2022. But I would like to go through these, just to put it on the record. For those who are watching at home, the items are the, the words colored in red are changes to the, what would have been existing goals. So for item number one, goal number one, we need to provide a new 3.0 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant to serve the city. This used to be 1.5 MGD. 3.0, we agreed, was better capacity to shoot for. This would just be a service city which can be expanded with future demands. And with this, we will proceed with site selection, design, and permitting for a new wastewater treatment plant. We will evaluate financing options to minimize impact on current customers. We will accommodate expansion capability to serve industrial growth, and we would like to consider a ward of construction by January of 2023. The second goal is to repair and rehabilitate existing sidewalks and continue sidewalk extensions. We added one more objective this year to the existing goals, and that is to create and that is to create an index that evaluates current sidewalks to prioritize repair based on condition and safety. We would also complete sidewalk extensions currently planned with TAP grant funds on North and South Cherokee and on East High Tower. Included twenty percent contingency funding in each construction contract for repairs of existing sidewalks. We will program SPOLOX transportation funds and seek appropriate grants to rehabilitate and improve accessibility of existing sidewalks. And we will increase attention to sidewalks in the annual maintenance of city streets. Goal number three remains unchanged from the previous iteration of the city goals. And that is to update the city charter and code to simplify and streamline, to strategically initiate city charter amendments, simplify and update the alcohol ordinance, define locations within the city appropriate for higher-density housing, and amend the zoning text and map to remove barriers. Remove RMD zoning district regulations to enable housing construction, which is in character with existing in these areas. Include consideration of setbacks, housing size, and housing type. We will also consider adoption of redevelopment incentive, light tax, military rate ordinance. Consider zoning and subdivision ordinance changes to streamline and simplify processes and remove unnecessary barriers and requirements. And finally, we will establish a schedule for completion of overall code review. The fourth goal is to adopt an economic development strategy for Social Circle to guide the Development Authority of Social Circle and the Walton Economic Development Authority. And we added three items to this goal. One is to encourage transparency and open lines of communication between all parties involved, while respecting the nature of economic development negotiations. Ensure compatible vision between the Social Circle Development Authority and the mayor and city council, and develop an economic development toolkit that would be appropriate for use for economic development initiatives. Goal number five is to explore strategies to expand youth engagement and opportunities within the community. Goal number six is to increase transparency of city government and expand communication between the city and the community. Goal number seven is to develop an approach for stormwater, which balances community willingness to fund revenues with desired city service levels. And number eight is a new goal to focus on for the next two years. And that is to develop a strategy to ensure that the growth of the public safety departments keeps up with the pace of development. So we've discussed this in the work, in the retreat. We've also discussed in the work session, and I think we're ready to move ahead with adopting this. And we do recommend approval.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the strategic goals for 22 and 24.
Second.
Motion from Steve, second from Teresa. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, an ordinance amendment for open meetings and open record procedures. Mr. Attorney.
Mayor and council, this ordinance and the next resolution are related. This is really just a cleanup to make Susan and the other department heads of the city's lives a little easier. As the city continues to grow, we're gonna want all the open records requests in writing to Susan or the city clerk of the future, just so it can be centralized and we know what's being requested and from where. Right now, we have an issue of the fire chief, police chief, et cetera, getting open records requests directly, which is fine. But as the city grows, it's gonna be harder to keep up with them. And I believe those two men have better things to do and answer those all day, so. Oh, sorry. So we are just asking that we amend our open records ordinance to make all requests be in writing into the city clerk. And then the resolution that'll be under consideration next is making Susan that person that needs to be in writing to.
Thank you, Jay. I'll entertain a motion to amend the open meetings and open records ordinance.
Make a motion to amend.
Have a motion to amend by Tyson.
Second.
Second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, number three was a resolution to designate an open records officer with that recommendation being Ms. Susan Roper.
So move.
Motion from Steve.
Second.
Second from Nathan. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
I had a discussion, but I was just gonna ask, did it have to be her name or is it a position? City clerk.
Okay.
I'm in the motion.
Motion and second, okay with that? Amend it to indicate city clerk.
Yep.
Nathan, still good, second? Amended motion, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We do have a need for an executive session this afternoon for discussion of real estate. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move. Thank you.
Motion and a second, all in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.